We'll bring this meeting to order. Good evening, my name is B.J. Hall and I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the Town of Monroe. It is February 22nd, 2023, and it is 7:05 PM. I'll take a roll call of the members of the commission and the staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, B.J. Hall, here. Vice Chairman Keith Hahn. Jim Stewart.
Here.
Ryan Kelly.
Here.
Clark Gingras, not present. Ross Mastoraco, not present. Eric Lindstrom.
Here.
Cheryl Valerie.
Here.
Rick Schultz.
Here.
And Sarah Stroud.
Here.
Very good. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The Inland Wetlands Mission Statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses with the Town of Monroe. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, be with the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title at the outset of each occasion that you are speaking. All votes taken in which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. Chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. Normal course of our meeting, we hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission, during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. Commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting then will be open for public comment. Are there any changes to the agenda? No, Mr. Chairman. Very good. For our... Hmm? Oh, okay. Chair recognizes Ross Mastoraco.
Thank you.
Join the meeting at 7:08. IWC 2022-16, 417 Main Street. Application for proposed piping existing intermittent watercourse and filling and grading in the regulated area. See the letter here from J. Edwards and Associates regarding this application. They are granting the commission an extension of the time limit within which to close a public hearing. They're granting an additional 30 days to close the public hearing. And with this, we are able to continue that hearing until our next meeting. That meeting, that hearing is continued. 127 Main Street, proposed construction of a seven multi-story apartment building complex. I have a letter here for solely engineering for the hearing continuance. Mission members, we formally request the continuation of the public hearing for IWC 2023-02 to the next scheduled inland wetlands meeting on March 8th. That continuation is allowed, and that hearing has now been continued. Next item on our agenda tonight. We have application hearing determinations, but we have no new applications to consider. So we move to the deliberation session. C, deliberations on completed hearings. First being IWC 2022-15, 125 Garter Road, proposed regulated activity within upland review area, excavating and filling permit.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, all the members have a draft resolution. I will read it, and then the chairman will ask for a motion and a second, and then a roll call. The commission directed staff to write a favorable resolution. Regarding IWC 2022-15, file 1420, application type, public hearing, 125 Garter Road, whereas the Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission has considered an application by solely engineering on behalf of 125 Garter Road LLC applicant for the filling and grading of property, including the installation of a stormwater basin and the removal of debris and the replanting of landscaping within the upland review area on property located at 125 Garter Road. Property proposes the alteration of 28,560 square feet of upland review area. Property contains 9.4 acres, of which 2.5 acres is wetlands. There are 2.5 acres of upland review area. The commission received the following application as part of the submission. Town of Monroe, 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 Inland Wetlands application, Connecticut DEEP, a reporting form, list of abutters within 100 feet, engineering report titled Engineering Memorandum, prepared by solely engineering dated 8/7/22, plan set title, proposed site development prepared by solely engineering dated 8/01/22 revised through January 25th, 23, consisting of 10 sheets. Exhibits 1 through 7 as referenced and entered in the record during the public hearing. Upon considering the above listed submission data and respective testimony at the noted notice public hearing, open on November 9th and closed on February 8th, 2023, the commission makes the following determination. One, the project proposes to excavate and export approximately 81,700 cubic yards of earth material from the property for the preparation of future industrial developments. All improvements will be in the upland review area of the property. It should be noted that this reduced cubic yardage was reduced from the original intent of over 200,000 cubic yards. Both this commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission asked to waive the base elevation of the site, resulting in the exercise to be a little more steep. Keeping in mind, this is an industrial zone land, however, it is on a scenic road. The zoning came first, then the scenic road. Commission finds that a notice of violation was previously issued by staff for property located at 125 Garter Road for unauthorized stockpiling of material within the upland review area. Commission noted that the property had been heavily excavated for many years without the benefit of a permit. The more recently stockpiling was associated with the Pepper Street reconstruction. Three, commission finds the property is not located in a special flood hazard area. Four, the commission finds that the property is adjacent to Aquarium Water Company and the State of Connecticut properties. A lot of open space to the west that immediately abuts members that visit the site. It's heavily wooded. Also, two, there was, the property owner allowed hunters to go on the site. We had complaints at the planning and zoning meeting regarding the discharge of a firearm, but they comply with the separation distance to a house. Commission finds that the proposed, proposes the installation of above-ground stormwater quality basement, which will capture and treat the water quality prior to entering the wetlands. Six, commission during its review noted the following, the project will require the design of a replanting plan for the area of stump removal. The applicant agreed to submit this plan. B, restriction of onsite fuel storage and the crossing and processing of earth material was discussed in detail to avoid impact to the wetlands area. A quarterly engineer report was requested and agreed upon by the applicant. This is something that the Planning and Zoning Commission will be getting as well. This is very common now for sites that are experiencing grading and excavation, and for any project that is going to take a long period of time, including the processing facility on Pepper Street. C, adequate dust control must be maintained at all times to minimize impact to the adjacent wetlands. Applicant has submitted inadequate operations and maintenance plan. Once again, this falls on the shoulder of staff to go out there. Once again, the quarterly report will address these, but staff will monitor as much as we can. We do have a lot of active sites in town, but this is something that I know this commission wants, P&amp;Z wants, and the neighborhood as well. Seven, commission finds the application is complete pursuant to section 70 of the Town of Monroe Inland Wetlands Regulations. And eight, the commission agrees there are no prudent or feasible alternatives. Now, Mr. Chairman, as stated, we need a motion and a second, and then a roll call vote. The conditions of approval include the submission of a replanting plan, subject to staff approval. If the commission wants to see, you can say the commission approval. That is your call. Two, submission of quarterly status report to the staff in the wetlands commission during site preparation by solely engineering. And three, posting of a $20,000 site bond. Planning and zoning commission will require a separate site bond, and it will be substantially higher than the 20,000. So if everything is in order, Mr. Chairman, then a motion and a second is in order.
Okay. Can I ask a question? I was just gonna say, does anyone have a question?
I have a question.
Good.
Six, B. The first sentence there, it doesn't, it's not very strong to me. It doesn't really say that they have to do that.
They're bringing in portable fuel. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not want permanent...
The planning and zoning condition, that is.
Right, and I think it strikes well with the inland wetlands.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't our condition, because it doesn't really say that they can't do it. Just says we discussed it.
Right.
But no, if it's already a condition, that's great.
Years past, you have more permanent fuel, as Keith is aware, and it can be problematic if it leaks, or someone tries to steal from it and destroys it.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, the tree replanting that we talked about the last meeting, is that gonna be part of that...
That's a good plan. Yes.
So it doesn't, so details don't have to be considered?
Do you want the commission to review it?
I think the commission should review it.
I'm gonna replace staff like the...
In my personal opinion, I would like them to come back with the plan, and we can discuss and make sure that it's what we intended.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I made that correction.
Okay. I'll call for a motion to approve. Motion to approve the...
IWC 2022-15.
Second. Has modified.
Second.
Second. We'll take a roll call vote on the end. Ryan Kelly.
Oh, yes.
Eric Lindstrom.
Yes.
Ross Mastoraco.
Jim Stewart.
Yes.
Peter Mott.
Yes.
B.J. Hall, yes. And we are set with that. Complete and approved with changes.
The question on the time when that planting plan, there's no timeline as to when that needs to be submitted.
Let us, let us add, to be submitted within 60 days, 90?
I was thinking 60.
60 days. They are working on it as we speak, so I'll have the 60 days.
Okay. Maybe brain farting, but did you do the public participation? Public participation?
Yeah, 'cause I see some people here that, like, I wasn't sure. That's why.
Thank you. I will ask if there's any public participation for any topic not specific to the applications that we're hearing. If anyone would like to speak tonight, please come forward and speak. Hearing none, I'll ask remotely. Anyone remote wish to speak in a public manner?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, this is Thomas Brennan. I'm the administrator for the estate of John Stofan. I'm here at the meeting.
Not there yet.
Right.
Not there yet.
Okay, excuse me, we have, you're on the agenda, actually.
Oh, okay.
We will get to you, but good to know you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? remotely? Okay, we'll continue then. Thanks, Keith. Deliberation session four, completed hearing IWC 2023-1, 209 Wheeler Road, proposed single-family dwelling in a regulated area.
Sir, Commissioner, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is a application that came in for the last two meetings, and the applicant came in and discussed it with you, proposal of a construction of residential home, driveway, roof infiltration, sewage disposal system, and associated landscaping and wetland restoration. The wetlands had, the property had been cleared, and he didn't know he had wetlands in an intermittent watercourse. He showed the plans, we gave you guys a copy of the application, the plans, the house, the property, and the only thing that was missing was a planting plan. Since then, he hired a wetlands company, and they came up with a planting plan that staff was very happy with, was 66 plantings all along the watercourse, and I have a copy of it if you'd like to see it, but basically restores the wetlands in the watercourse area satisfactorily. So it's on, and there's a draft resolution. If you'd like me to read it.
If you could read that.
Whereas the Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission, here and after referred to as the commission, has considered all information submitted and the factors for consideration, standards and criteria for decision as detailed in section 10 of Monroe's Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Regulations, and whereas the impacts of the proposed activity as conditioned below will not likely result in negative impact on the wetlands or watercourse, and the commission finds the submitted application materials are consistent with the requirements as set forth by the current Town Monroe Inland Wetlands Watercourses Regulations, the Inland Wetlands Watercourses Act pursuant to sections 22A-36 to 22A-45, and general statutes as amended. And then there's a resolution. Now therefore be it resolved based on the above, the commission upon motion by the commissioner, and second by the commissioner, and so on. I just wanted to mention that there is a bond that would be sent in the amount of $5,200 to be posted, along with execution and signing of bond agreement, and that will be held for two full growing seasons after initial planting. And the season extends from May 15th to October 15th of any given year. And I have standard conditions that are just, you know, don't go beyond limits of disturbance, et cetera.
Very good, very good, thank you. Any questions before we call for a motion? I call for a motion.
Motion to approve IWC 2023-1. I motion to approve.
We have a motion from Ryan Kelly.
Second?
My second.
Eric Lindstrom gives us a second. We'll vote by roll call vote. At the end, Ryan Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Lindstrom.
Yes.
Ross Mastoraco.
Yes.
Jim Stewart.
Yes.
Keith Ramonel.
Yes.
B.J. Hall, yes. And this is complete. That completes our deliberation session.
Talk to you tomorrow.
Drop off the bond tomorrow morning, can I start?
I'll talk to you in the morning. Gotta go.
Thank you.
Take care.
Question D, IWC Activities Report.
So 55...
Cheryl here.
Okay, thank you.
Before you start, though, I want to make one comment. I thank you for bringing these back onto the agenda. There was a time previously where we reviewed them. Some of you will remember, 118 Elm Street, Barn Hill, a number of things here that we had looked at and had really gone dormant. But I asked Cheryl to look into them, and she's brought them up and will update us. Thank you.
We're getting there. 55 Meadow Brook, that was the board just property, and he had gone in and cleared the back of his property. I brought to you guys' attention a couple meetings ago, and basically, I just wanted to give you a quick update. No paperwork or anything, it's just that we received a letter from a surveying and engineering company that they had been retained, and a soil scientist hired to delineate the wetlands, Jim McManus, and they're going to expect to have a plan submitted to us within two to three weeks. So moving along with that one.
This is a residential property.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And then for 1380 Monroe Turnpike, there was a notice of violation issued, this is from 2020, so this is when Denise Halsted was here, right around COVID hitting. And so the, it's a 31-acre property roughly, and the owner had cleared portions of the wetlands, the buffer, upland review area, and the wetland lines were delineated in about 2006 and have not been updated since then. So usually we'd like to see a wetlands report within roughly five years. I'm not sure if it's, the wetland lines have changed, but we don't know. And also, the assessor had noted on the assessment that there was a zone forest, so some of the property should be remained forest, so we need to discuss that. And then some other issues as far as restoration were not resolved. And Attorney Tom Brennan is online to talk to us about his concerns and wants to work it out with you guys. And one other thing is, in your packet, underneath your enforcement notes, each of the applications or properties, I should say, there's paperwork to go along with. There's a little packet for 1380 Monroe Turnpike. The first piece of paper, the 11x17, is the 2006 wetlands delineation, which I highlighted in green, and the 100-year, I'm sorry, the upland review area, 100-foot area is in red. A copy of the notice of violation that was issued March 2020, and Denise's potential violations map, which is very, very detailed. Beyond that, there are four aerial maps. The first one is from 2020, and I split the property up in two sections because it's so long. So the first one, it says 2020 aerial, 2015 aerial, and you'll see that it's basically the front of the property along of Monroe Turnpike. And you'll see 2015 to 2020, the difference of the areas where they were cleared. And then the last two are just kind of, kind of touching that. And there's back where the house is there, there's a hoop house, and then there's two more wetlands that were supposedly disturbed around 2020. So the 2020, so just so you can see differences between those different five years, what they look like. So that's, that's what those are there for, to help you get a aerial view.
And on that 2020 aerial...
Yes.
...upon there.
There's a couple, yeah, there's a larger one, and then there's a smaller one of that. And these are me, this is, this is me drawing in the, the green lines of the wetlands based on scaling off this 20, this 2006 map, so, you know, just kind of giving you an idea of what we're looking at and where the disturbed areas were and where are. That's just background for that.
Is this the one that had that probate issue? That's the one. There was clearing on two adjacent properties.
Right, and then some, and then there were a couple attorneys, one was a woman, I remember.
Who used to come periodically to up to this.
Yeah.
And the current attorney is here to speak to us tonight.
And, yep, and Cheryl, you had said that some of this property is supposed to be in forestry?
Well, that was what Denise had in her notes, as the tax assessor's records showed. I didn't see that on the tax assessor's records, unless I missed it, I didn't see that, but that was in her notes, that that had to be taken care of. So I haven't talked to our attorney about that, but it's something that should be discussed because it sounds like it was an issue back in 2020 that the commission was very interested in.
Yeah, because you need to have 25 acres, but non-contiguous, so if there's 30 acres here, and this is the only property, this is the way I understand it, because I did some research on it for myself.
Okay.
If this is all the property owned by this person or this family, whatever the trust is, and there's not 25 acres of trees, classified forest, then they lose that classification. But they also may have other properties in the state of Connecticut that are also classifieds for, it's cumulative.
Okay, of ownership, okay.
Yeah, so, so I don't know how that works out if we were, if we were questioning whether they're keeping their forestry designation, but they must have to provide their status with, I assume, the other towns in acreage there for the cumulus of 25. I don't know if that really...
It's relevant because they continue to clear and split wood in the area close to the road.
Can you clarify where on Monroe Turnpike it is? Just so I'm, I'm trying to get a visual on it.
It's like, it's like two or three properties before the castle, you know the castle?
Right.
On the same side, heading towards the dam.
Okay. Quite often, there's a sign up, eggs for sale. Yep. There's llamas or something they raise back there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I think it might be an appropriate time for Attorney Tom Brennan to update us. I would like to understand the overall picture with the settlement of the estate, if it doesn't take too long, and then the current situation with the property. So we call on...
Well, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Tom Brennan, as I mentioned earlier, I am the administrator of the estate. The estate is the owner of the property. There are two beneficiaries of the property, Rosemarie Torek and Frank Schrute. Frank Schrute is the rogue farmer of the property right now. I did become aware very recently from Rosemarie Torek, the other beneficiary, that Mr. Schrute has been cutting down trees that is certainly not authorized by the estate, and I will be addressing that with Mr. Schrute shortly to tell him to stop altering the land any further. Is renting the land from the estate, some farming on it, some of that farming is, is appropriate. Overall, the estate is looking to, to sell the property as there are insufficient assets to pay its debts. And it has been speaking with real estate brokers to, and with the idea of marketing the property as soon as prop, as possible. Additionally, I have spoken to J. Edwards Associates about addressing the inland wetland violations on the property, and I hope to get a better sense of, from them, what would be involved in remediating the property, and of course, working with the commission to ensure that that's done correctly. And so there, there's a possibility that the estate will, might be able to fund the remediation before selling the property. If not, that would certainly be, need to be addressed by any developer of the property. So that's sort of where we stand right now as, as far as the state settlement.
So, Mr. Brennan, the estate is not yet settled? Is that correct?
It is not. The, we have to sell this property before the estate can be settled.
Okay, so the estate will be selling the property?
Yes. It's going to be marketed, it's going to be placed on, and you know, the open market to be sold to, for, for a, for development. The estate will not be applying for zoning approval. That'll have to be done by the developer that purchases the property.
You'll, you'll be selling the property as is?
Well, that's correct. There is, if it's, it would, we're also, at the same time, I'd like to see possibly addressing the inland wetland violations while the property is being marketed. And again, I'm speaking with Jason Edwards at J. Edwards Associates to get an understanding of what's involved with that and the cost to, to get that done. However, that, there's also a possibility that that'll have to be done, the remediation will have to be addressed by the developer, and that just have to be part of the sale. But I wanted to let the commission know that, you know, I, I'm looking forward to working with the commission and trying to, to get these violations remedied as soon as possible. And, you know, I'm doing the best I can as the administrator to, to do that, to sell the estate. And of course, I have limited funds to do so, but again, I just wanted to let the commission know that I am aware of the violations. The violations are certainly not authorized by the estate, and I'll be... The violations are certainly not authorized by the estate, and I'll be addressing them with Frank Schrodle.
Very good. I think one thing that would be very helpful in your work with Jason Edwards would be to have an assessment of the wetlands done here. So we all have a current assessment, since this one was 2006.
The wetlands.
We need a current snapshot before any remediation can even occur. So I would make note of that. He would know how to handle that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Make sense for cease and desist through the clearing of the wetlands there?
Informal, on the books with.
Yes, with the estate, with Assistant Attorney Brennan and working with Mr. Schrodle.
We'll keep it on the agenda for update for next meeting.
Say a month out, for some time for this to develop.
Sure.
Any other questions? Question on this one? Remember this one. I'd suggest drive by, you'll see trees being cleared right on the, next to the road there, quite a pile. And they've stripped the area all around these ponds, which essentially they created. So it's, it's, it needs attention. We need to give it the attention. Attorney Brennan, thank you very much for your time. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Same here.
Good to be there, Cheryl. What have you got next?
118 Elm Street. Try to find that information. This is another 2020 violation. Unapproved clearing, storage of woodpile in upland review area, and disturbance beyond the limit of disturbance line. Mr. Michael Daniels is here to, he's the owner. He's coming in to, well, let me back up. There was an application submitted to remediate the violation in April of 2021 that staff received. And one of the problems was that the planting plan, from a staff perspective, was not robust enough and satisfactory. So it was put on the agenda for April 28th, and they, the wetlands commission issued a notice of determination requesting the owner come in to discuss the planting plan and the woodpile storage issues. And it seems like it just kind of fell off after that. So he's coming in now to build his, build his house, and it will be outside the upland review area, but there's still questions as to the planting plan that are unresolved. So here's my handy dandy proposed remediation plan. This is, this is the plan that was submitted to staff with the remediation plan in April 21. And it was, staff was a little concerned about it. Some of these plantings are not, you know, wetland, wetlands specific and wouldn't be the best plants for the wetland area, a lot of raspberries, grapes, things like that. What was actually done was grass was planted, and then along this, I guess, left side right there where the winter blooms and black widow, black willows were supposed to be planted, two cherries, two apples, and a pear tree were planted along that side of the property. So that's what's there right now. Attached to that is the plan for the house, which just goes outside of the upland review So I did inspect the property, and the cabin is still there. I inspected the inside of the cabin, it's obviously not a wetlands issue. But when I issued the permit for the house, I'm going to write all over about the cabin and make sure that doesn't, it's not a dwelling unit and all that. So there's no kitchen in there or anything. The privy, which is the outhouse, will be removed as per health department requirements, so that will be gone. The stockpile of the wood is out of the upland review area. I think I might have saw, seen a boat there, but the, but the woodpile's out. So that's resolved. So basically, it's back before you to discuss this outstanding planting plan. I'm not sure if you would like to see a different planting plan, more with wetland-specific plantings, move some of the grass removed, and then some plantings put in and to restore at least the buffer along the wetland line near the water course as an undisturbed area and to be left, you know, undisturbed with more wetland-specific plantings.
It sounds like that, given the house plan here, there's a lot of opportunity for us to bring this into compliance.
Well, I mean, the house is outside of upland review, so, I mean, as far as getting a, getting a zoning approval, you know, for, from a, from a commission's standpoint, if there wasn't any outstanding wetlands issues from 2020, a permit would probably just be issued for the house, right?
Correct.
So it's coming back to you because there was an open, an open file and unresolved planting plan issue. So if, if you'd like to see a more robust planting plan, come back to the commission or you'd like staff to handle it and have a new, maybe a new remediation plan submitted to staff, or you'd like to see it, it's up to the commission how they want to handle that.
Well, let me ask.
And the owner's here to discuss it as well. He's right there.
Very good.
Mr. Daniels.
Is there anything you'd like to say, sir? You have a.
Basically, I just, I've been kind of waiting. It kind of went on the back burner, I guess, because the person relocated. And basically, I moved the woodpile and I presented the plans, the plantings, and I've just been waiting. And now that I'm ready to build the house, it's kind of come out now, so.
Okay. Just for the record, could you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Michael Daniel.
Very good. So I'll ask any commissioners who might have a question on this. One of those questions is, do we want to continue to see this or do we want Cheryl to handle it with our input?
I have a question for Mr. Daniels.
Daniels, yeah.
If we're going to ask that, why don't you come forward, sir, to the microphone?
Yeah. Stand by. Stand right there. Do you have an engineer draw these plans?
Yes.
Who is that? Because I only have a.
Alan Smith.
Do they do plans remediation? Maybe they can help with the proper selection if there's an issue, right? The issue is with some of the plant selection.
Yes, and the fact that grass was planted, I wasn't sure if that was something the commission wanted, or maybe pull some of it out, put buffer in along the wetlands, something like that.
But the trees themselves were in question also?
The trees, the plan was, the plan was not followed. What would happen was, you put the grass in, and then along this, this line here, you put two cherries, two apples, and a pear. So as far as like wetland planting restoration plan, that might be something that might need to be.
I was thinking, to save us from diving into it when you've got, you know, an engineer already working on this plan, maybe you can ask if they have the capacity to alter the plant list to reflect, you know, a wetlands restoration versus an orchard.
Yeah, well, basically, when I was asked to make a planting plan, I looked at the list of trees and plants that are required for wetlands, and all of those trees, and even the fruits, raspberry and all that are on the list, so that's why I put them on there. And I just put them in certain areas that I thought would work, and then thought, over me and see what the answer was.
The staff had, had thought there was a lot of grass and that the blueberries, raspberry, and grapes were not, you know, I guess, apples to apples as far as what was there before. And, you know, I think she, I think staff had wanted to see more of an undisturbed area going forward, and I think that's why she wanted to bring it back.
That was your, that was your plan? You drew, you drew this plan with the trees there?
Yeah.
Okay, not that you're, you're not, it's not allowed to do yourself. Let me rephrase what I was saying. Whatever the issues that may have arise from what your plan was and what was done, whatever, it would maybe very helpful for everybody to move this thing along is if you, see if you can engage your engineer to solve, solve whatever issues there may be. Instead of you and us trying to work it out, you already got a professional involved. It shouldn't take them very long to get it all ironed out with staff and whatever else, you know, based on the regulations and whatnot. If that appeals to you, I think that's probably the best, best way to handle this, this part of the, of the application and everything else. I don't think they even, it's just this.
That's it. Right, because otherwise they're outside, they're outside of upland review.
That's why I think that.
Good suggestion. I think maybe, I'd say there was a lot of grass, but can it be maybe some overseed with wetland grass or something that could move it in the right direction?
Sure, and then, and then just some kind of a buffer down along the, along the water, water's edge to really just protect.
Was that cleared down there?
The, the owner, the original owner who developed, he bought the house on the corner, the big white house, and then he sectioned it off the other two lots. And he cleared all the, there was basically a forest there of pine trees, and he cleared it all in the meantime of when I was thinking of buying it, but then the pandemic happened and I was like, I don't know if I was going to do, I was unsure. So then I bought it, well, I went back to him and he had already cleared all the trees. And then I don't know what he did in the back, what it was like before that. So that was kind of their concern, because they didn't, the town didn't really know what he did or didn't do. I didn't know either. I just, you know, was kind of left on my lap, you know?
Yeah.
It was a surprise for me that I had to do all this planting and stuff. So I was like, okay, something he did, but I was like, okay, let's see what I have to do.
Well, I think, I think your suggestion, Mr. Ramon, is good to work with your, your builder and your person who did your plans for you, and this thing should be resolved very easily.
So just bring it back to staff and then handle it at a staff level?
Handle it at staff level, I would say.
Okay.
And then maybe at some point, when it's finished, give us a quick update.
Sure.
Somewhere.
Good.
Good.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
For coming.
All right, thanks for your time.
Okay, second to last, 381 Barn Hill Road. This is another one from the 20s, 2020. So basically, what happened was Denise Halsted was alerted by Aquarian that there was erosion taking place at this property. It's on the corner of Barn Hill and Nickel Place, so you have a packet here that shows the property. And she went out, it's a residential house, yep, a single-family home. So at that time, she went out and inspected it, and there were questions as to whether or not there were wetlands on the property. She wrote a letter to him saying, you know, I think there might be a problem, there's suspected wetlands, there's been clearing, and let's work this out. The file, from what I can see, there's not much in the file as far as correspondence after that, but basically, no permits were taken out to restore the area. So the plans that I have here, this is a plan that actually was submitted to the health department that shows a new septic system going in. So you can see in the front, there's a kind of a U-shaped wetlands that was put on the survey that references the wetland GIS map of the town of Monroe. So that's one part of it. What you don't see, and this was part of the subdivision of the property, is back in the back corner of Nichols, where I'm pointing with my pinky, there was some kind of a wetland up there as well, but that's not shown on here. That might not even be there anymore, but, so there's a couple of different sections. I was alerted in December of 2022 by Aquarian that there was more erosion taking place. So if you see, with my crude drawing of pencil over here on the right side of Barn Hill, there was a curb cut put in that, with stone, that takes you to that septic area.
Is that the photograph we see?
Let's see, I took a lot of photographs, and I had to really edit what I gave you guys so I didn't confuse you. Under, the next page is 2015.
It's too obvious.
Right, so the first one, 2015, here's Barn Hill and Nickel. So you can see the wooded area, so you can kind of like get a progression from 2015. Next one is 2019, again, just showing that there were trees on both sides of the street. This is a 2020 aerial showing the clearing. You can see the beginnings of a stone wall. And on the right side of that stone wall, that's where that, that curb cut was put in with all the stone going back to where the septic was put in, or was being put in at the time. So she sent a letter saying, you're clearing, I think there's wetlands there, let's get this resolved, and there's no correspondence after that that really says it was. This was a picture taken by, I think, I think Denise, but definitely staff, that was in the file showing, looking towards Nickel Place. So this is Barn Hill going, I think, south, and here's Nickel Road, Nickel Road. So this is the wetlands area right here, supposedly, and the stone wall that was being put in. So the whole property was basically cleared all along the front of Barn Hill. And the last picture, this is the one that I took in December of 2022. So there's the curb cut, which isn't really relevant, but this part is a berm with stone all along that, that little stone wall turned into this. So this was all put in between 2020 and 2022. So I sent a letter requesting, I think, I think I sent, actually, I sent two letters. I sent a request for voluntary compliance for a zoning issue, I think, a possible deck without permits. Then I sent him a notice of violation and saying, you know, I think that this is a problem, you know, come in and give us an updated wetlands plan. And then we met with him on, in the, in the office around, actually, it was January 17th. And we talked about it, and he said, you know, there aren't wetlands, and, you know, there were some staffing issues, and we had, we had a long talk. But basically, he said he had a soil report, he was going to bring it in, and it happened. Time goes on, time goes on, and I said, you know, I think we're going to put this on the agenda, and I told him that I was going to do that. And he said he was going to have his attorney handle it. Nothing happened. So here we are, and he actually wants to get a permit to put on a three-car garage on the back of his house, and I'm saying, we have an outstanding wetlands issue here. I think the property was filled in, so we're going to resolve that. So we're kind of at this point. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I think I'm going to have to issue cease and desist and, and move this along, and hopefully he'll come. I invited him and his attorney to come tonight to discuss it with you.
Were they in?
I wish, I wish they were here, I don't.
Did he get a, did he get a permit for the curb cut? That's where the wetlands was?
It's possibly in the wetlands. It's pretty large. I can't really tell exactly where it is, but it's.
He cleared, he cleared the whole thing.
He cleared the whole thing, and he put, and he put, yeah, he did, he did that without a curb cut, unless he got it since I had to talk to him, but I did talk to Public Works because they had no, they had no, no permit for a curb cut at the time that I talked to them in December, so.
And that would have been possibly, I see where it's kind of scratched in there.
Yeah, I just drew that in there when I was out on the site, trying to, you know, put the pieces together. And so he, but he did email me saying that he has a soil scientist out there delineating the wetlands, and he said, we'll see what happens, and I'm waiting for it.
I'd say that would be the most important.
For sure, absolutely. I just, but I wanted to, but it's been going on since December.
The wetlands continue across Barn Hill?
Oh, towards this side?
On the other side.
You know what? When I first looked at the GIS map, I think it does. I think it does, yeah.
Just for reference, is rock firm?
It's honestly, when I stand outside, it's almost four feet.
Because that doesn't, that's not the house, is it?
Yeah.
Is that the house? Is that the same house, or is that a neighbor's house?
Let's see, let's just see it. That's their house. So actually, I actually used that picture.
I saw it in the aerial.
Because you can see it in the 2020 shot, and then you can see it.
That's the same rock.
Right, and then you can see it right there, too. So that's the berm and the progression of it cleared, and then they, and then the last couple of years, that was put in. And, you know, if there's no wetlands there, great, but if there are, it's probable, you know?
Is it level, is it all level now, over there?
That was from 2020, it was just.
Is here, oh.
So I just requested more information for the last, like, you know, most of the months.
The only I'd have to say about it is, yeah, it's got to be tested by also, I think in this particular situation, it might, it might warrant two deep holes in the, in the wetlands area. Because the guy, I think the wetlands guy is only required to use a plunger that goes down 12 inches, so if they put 12 inches, it fell over it.
I figured they might test up here and then right, right at the edge of the berm. Yeah, the berm covers quite a bit of it. If that, if it is, if it is a wetland, it covers quite a bit of it. It's substantial, I mean.
That's why I would.
It's a deep hole.
Deep hole, yeah.
Yeah, a little more thorough.
I don't know who this wetland scientist is. I'm not privy to that information.
Just got to get, I think we just got to get back to him and say that, you know, we reviewed the situation, you know, you didn't take out a permit, as far as we know for anything, and there was potentially wetlands there, and, you know, if you fill them up with sandy soil, it's not going to show as a wetlands anymore. The only way to find out is get down into the subsoil.
Well, they'll be.
Most likely.
They'll be able to tell if it's, if it's filled.
How good of a job he did. I mean, it's happening.
I guess if he knows what he's doing, maybe not, but.
I would say if he just fills it in, and the guy only has to go down, I think, 12 inches with an auger, right? 18 inches with a little hand auger? If he did a good job, he wouldn't, he probably wasn't, he was really trying to fool it. I don't know, it doesn't sound like he was probably savvy enough to dig out the wetland soils down to underneath. They're probably still there.
Yeah.
I'm saying, it just, it's a foolproof way to know.
I think, I think it's good advice to start.
I think, I think it's good advice to start discussion if this can continue. But I think we are within our rights to request a couple of deep holes or.
Just pass it on to him.
I will pass it on.
Since you control his desk and his three-car garage, I think you have a little opportunity here.
I will see what I can do.
If he's, if he's innocent, he shouldn't have a problem.
We've been failing back and forth. Let's put it that way. Okay, last one. Um, one last one. This is actually an application that you guys approved September 2022 to put a barn on a property at the, at the side of a single-family house property. And there was a planting plan and a grading plan. A bond was posted. And then, right when I started working here, they requested the bond release. I went out to do an inspection, and the plans did not match what was on site. So I don't know if anyone's online or here.
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, hi. How you doing?
A little disappointed that solely engineering is not here because they were supposed to be here.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if Mary would be on Zoom or something. But anyway, so just very quickly, this is the approved plan. And.
Address for that?
53 Whispering Pines. Road, Whispering Pine Road. So basically, this was the approved plan, and the red area is more of the fill. It's, it was filled basically right around where the silt fence is. And then the planting plan was not exactly followed of location type, et cetera. So I had talked to the owner and I had talked to Mary Blackburn quite a few times, more to Mary Blackburn, and just saying, you know, I like to just pick to the commission an updated plan of what's actually there and let them, you know, obviously, it's a modification. And, you know.
The red lines, they, they represent a deviation of the grading?
Correct. So the, it looks like, it looks to me like the plan showed that the fill was supposed to kind of stop at the 280 line, right?
Up to wherever to.
And then just, and then it was just, yeah, right. But it was just supposed to be undisturbed. And then there was supposed to be some kind of a natural berm and plantings. And the fill goes beyond that, way beyond that. Not beyond the silt fence, but right, right, right up almost.
Be an LOD, limited disturbance?
Mm-hmm. So I.
See, the, the grade lines are hard to see here. I see.
It goes down to two, I think the last one I can see is 272, limited disturbance, maybe 270.
Yeah, but 280 to 272, where, there's no grade line showing where that changes.
280.
Faded ones.
279. Well, those are.
Oh, I see them in there, under the red.
Right. So.
Those are not supposed to be, so if he had, if there's 280, which is the dark one.
Right. That was.
And then below it is 278. So that is, that's the next grade line. So that whole area in the red should have not have been.
Filled.
Filled at all.
Right. So the fill was supposed to stop at 280 roughly. So that's, that was my understanding. And so there's more fill than, than what was, what was proposed.
The yellow is the wetlands, right?
Correct. So I, I said, you know, I'd like your, your engineer to revise this, landscaper to revise this, to show what's actually there, take it back to the commission, what do you, how do you want to modify it? Are you going to pull it out? Are you going to keep it? Are you going to change your planting plan? What, how are you modifying this? And, you know, I still, it's not, I'm not saying it's your fault. I'm just saying.
No, I, I understand. I'd just like to say that we have been, prior to your turnover here, Conrad had been out to the property. At one point, solely engineering came out and measured for us and told us we had to bring in another 300 yards of fill. So we were thinking all this time we were in compliance, we are not trying to not comply with you guys. I'm not, you know, we're not trying to hide anything. We're going away with anything. We are willing to work with you, do whatever we have to do. And like I said, I'm a little disappointed that solely engineering is not here tonight because Mary told me she would be here. She also informed me that they were working on modifications or working with you guys to come up with a solution for this. This is what I was told.
For sure. For sure.
So that's why I'm here tonight, because you were courteous enough to call me and tell me that you were putting us on the schedule for tonight. So that's why I'm here.
Yeah, I'm glad you came.
So I just, you know, we thought we're following this. Like I said, Conrad had been out once or twice. He's been out, before he left, he was out several times. Solely engineering was out several times measuring. So we thought we were doing what was supposed to be done. I mean, my husband doesn't, you know, he doesn't measure. So, you know, he just.
Sure.
Spreads it.
Yep.
We appreciate you working with us. If I could ask one favor, could you come forward and identify yourself for the recording? And it's good to know that you're working with Solly and Cheryl, and that's what it takes to get these things resolved. If you could identify yourself.
Tina Cassis, owner of 53 Whispering Pine Road.
Very good. Thank you. Question for you.
Yes.
When they, someone told you, you need 300 more yards of fill, was your barn already built?
No. I don't, I don't, I don't believe so. No. We put the barn in afterwards because the reason why we called them is because we weren't sure. The way the property is, it's like slopes down into, I don't know if you know where Whispering Pine is, but there's like tracks, I mean, train tracks at the bottom of the property of Whispering Pine.
Not on your property, but yeah.
Yeah. So the property slopes down. And we were calling them in to let us know if we had reached the grade that we needed to, because they came out to measure. They put poles in to where we had to, you know, bring the fill in. And we called them in to measure to tell us. And they, at that point, told us we needed 300 more yards. That was solely engineering. In fact, it was Mary Blackburn and the people that measured.
They said 300 more yards. This is kind of confusing to me because the grading plan shows the grade you need, and it's very well spelled out. You need to have 282.62 around the perimeter of your barn, maybe based on the design of the barn, because your first floor of your barn is 283. So it's giving you about four inches lower from your barn floor, four to five inches lower around the perimeter. And yes, if you were sloping down, you would have to, if your property, the previous grading left a void, you'd have to fill that and come back and put your barn in. But there's more than enough room behind the barn. You wouldn't, why would you need to raise the, where the red is? Like, why would you have to?
I can't answer that because I'm the engineer.
I just wanted, I wanted to see, wasn't sure if it was like, if it was before the barn was built, maybe they were talking about you had it built up above the 280 high enough to support your barn. And maybe fill was put in the wrong spot. I don't know. I'm just, if the barn was already there, it would, it would kind of mean that your upper area that looks like there was gray, you could tell there was gray changes. It was filled in to your barn. If the barn was already there, then we know that it was something related to the barn. And if this was done before the barn, maybe someone put the fill in the wrong spot, and that's how it ended there.
The area is, I mean, you've seen, Cheryl, we saw the area. The area is fairly large where they wanted us to put the fill. And then we had to bring a lot of fill in because they, you know, there was, there was a, I mean, almost like a, I'm not going to say divot, but.
We could tell, I could see by the grading lines, you know, the 282 got pushed out. You know, what is that? 50, 60 feet? That's a good amount. And crossed at least one or two other grade lines. So you're five, five, four to six feet of fill, you know, at the outside skirt of your, of your barn there. So that's definitely a lot of fill. But why would, that's where, on this plan, is showing us right here in your plan design, if that's the area needed to be filled, the area below the 280 line, which it looks like there is more fill, did not need to be filled for any purpose.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, you know what? I'm not the engineer.
No, I get it. I get it. I'm just.
You know what I'm saying? Like, we thought, that's why we had Conrad come out and the engineering company come out, because again, we're not the engineers. We brought the dirt in. We wanted to make sure that, okay, this is what we're, you know, we're following what we're supposed to do. So.
And it's a 3:1 slope. So it's not like they had to soften the slope.
I, I did think that solely was going to be represented here.
Yeah. All right. Well, just, you know, just trying to understand what we're looking at and, and seeing what might have possibly happened. Okay.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not really sure, but I just want to make sure that from here on in, whatever we need to do to get this done, you know, that we're in compliance with everything.
What's the issue with the planting?
Um, I don't think the plan was followed, and the number and type and location have changed. Which, again, if there wasn't a lot of fill, it probably could have worked out from a staff perspective, but that's another part of it.
Of course, the planting, the original planting, that what we're supposed to do, we had requested that they change the plants because some of the parts are hard for us to get, you know, to pick up two or three plants and having to travel to Massachusetts to get these wetland plants that you couldn't find locally, and they changed some of the plant types. So I don't know if you were, if you've got an update on that.
Never. No. That's, so when I, when I asked initially solely for the new modification of what is actually on the property with grades, I asked for an updated planting plan of what actually was installed. And that would, that would have helped.
Okay, I can, I have, I don't have the total new plans that they did. Once they said we could do the new planting, I guess she had to, at one point, they had to, they came in and met with the commissioner, they met with somebody, and they gave us a new planting list. She gave me a copy of the, the planting list, like on a very, she emailed it to me, a very small copy of the plans. I'm more than happy to make you a copy and bring it to you.
Email it to me.
Okay. Because that's what we were following. Because we did request that they, that, you know, if we could change some of the plants only because of the, you know.
Availability. Got it.
I think Mary could probably explain some of the things here.
Yes, I think so, too.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's, what is that, your next steps?
I, I was hoping that it would be resolved tonight, but I will contact her tomorrow, and I'm sure you will, too.
Well, I, because I thought she was going to be here.
Right.
In fact, I've already emailed her. Are you?
Okay.
Well, that's good, though. You, you, we know you have the best contention here.
And you have my phone number, you have my address, you know, anytime you need to get us, you know.
Yeah. I, it's just, you know, it's, it, since, because it was one of the first things that I dealt with when I started working here in November. So I just want to make sure it doesn't go longer, and you want your bond released and all that. So.
Well, more than that, we're just finished. We.
Yes, I understand.
During the pandemic, there was a lot of issues. We're getting materials, and we had to reapply for the ordinance permit. I mean, there was a lot going into it. We would just like to.
Okay. So.
So.
Waiting for a modification and a plan that shows what's, what's existing over there.
Very good.
Thank you so much for coming. That's it for me.
Okay. We're now in Section E, general discussion and other. We have the minutes.
Five.
Five. Hmm? It's almost embarrassing.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah. We should put this on the agenda next time. Do we, did we get the minutes from the last meeting? Is that included in our stuff today?
Should be. Yeah.
Okay. So I will, I want to action to review. Again, I set aside those from August and September. They had such minor changes. I need to get it wrapped up. So that was on me. Okay. Regulation Amendment Committee. Any updates? We are going to.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the chairman needs to designate the coordinator that will work with staff to go over the procedural requirements in establishing this subcommittee. Zoning has Zoning Regulations Subcommittee, and they need on an as-need basis. It has come to this commission's attention, especially with Cheryl on board, that certain text amendments have to occur. And the way you do it is through a subcommittee.
Right.
So the, the chairman usually designates, besides himself, two other members. I think you should start with three members, too.
Three members. I think that might be a, probably a good matter to leave till after our election, and then we can.
Sure.
Consider that an election item to dominate who, who would be the, the chair of that.
Yeah. And there is paperwork that staff will do with the town clerk.
Okay. Which we've never, in my time on this commission, we've never done that. So we need to, we keep finding more and more things that need tuning up. Okay. Public Outreach Committee. No actions there. That's probably one, another one we should formulate a little more formally at that time. And I, Chairman's acknowledgment of fulfilling CGS 22A-42D online training program. For myself, I'm almost finished with that. So I'm, I don't know if anyone else had taken that on the 2022 or 2023 in the Wetlands Comprehensive Training Program.
I started, but it's sleepy. It is like.
Okay. Okay.
So I started.
Yeah, just to remind the members, the statute requires the chairman or the wetlands agent to fulfill the deep training process. And then the, then staff will advise the Office of Policy and Management. This board is off the hook, Planning and Zoning, and Zoning Board of Appeals have to do classes, and it's a lot more involved and tedious.
I will commit to have that completed by our next meeting. So that acknowledgement will be made at that point.
And this will be required every year annually.
Do you have to renew it?
Every year.
Oh. I mean, it definitely was already informative. I was just in the first module. The hardest part was getting started.
Yeah.
All like, you know, signing up and then getting this email and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. It is a mandate without any teeth.
Yeah. But it's. But I think it's important. I've, I've learned a lot from the regulations aspect of it. But you're right, it's a little dry. Okay. Last item here, then, election of officers. So I have referred to my Robert's Rules of Order to help us do this correctly. Now, we do not have a nominating committee for officers. So that tells us we essentially take nominations from the floor. This is pretty simple. Chair calls for nominations from the floor by saying, for example, nominations are now in order for the Office of X. Any member may then call out, for example, I nominate Mr. A, without first standing or being recognized by the chair, and no seconds are necessary. The chair then announces this person is nominated, and we go through that process for any further nominations. So I think what we're going to have is nominations for, we'll start with chairman, we'll then go to vice chairman and then secretary, and then we will nominate a chairman for the Regulations Committee, Regulation Amendment Committee. So I will officially read this out. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Chairman. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Keith Romano.
Should we do, we should do each one individual go on to the next one.
That's right.
All those in favor of Keith Romano?
Aye.
Aye. We have a majority. Nominations are now open for Vice Chairman. Do we have a nomination?
Nominate Eric Lindstrom.
Eric Lindstrom is now, Eric Lindstrom is now nominated for Vice Chairman. Do we have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's six. And a call for nomination for Secretary.
I nominate BJ Hall.
Aye.
Aye.
We have our nominations. Last nomination is for Chairman of the Regulation Amendment Committee. If someone should care to nominate me for that, I would take that.
I nominate BJ Hall.
Okay.
Aye.
Very good.
Aye.
They're set. Last item on the list. Oh, and these new official officers' roles will be in effect immediately at the next meeting.
Correct.
And the part of the Regulation Committee will be to correct conflict between the bylaws of the wetlands and the code of the city. We'll fix that. Very good. Last item, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, we are all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned.